Presentation and hopefully explain the groundwork for you of what AI or whatever we really should call it is. And now get a historical perspective on how society has dealt with new technologies and how they impact communication and our speaker is Michael Sohola. Unlike John who had this type of career trajectory, Michael sort of was born in his trajectory in that his father was a prominent member of the broadcast world. His father Sanford worked for CBS News from nineteen fifty six to nineteen eighty eight. And he was eventually the executive producer of the CBS News with Walter Cronkite. I'm not sure most of you are familiar with, even if you don't know who was helping him behind the scenes. He's graduate of Columbia University and Georgetown University. He first went into broadcast journalism himself. When I don't know how we sort of made this connection, but when OJ died, somehow we had a correspondence, a sort of Forrest Gump moment, that he was on the assignment desk in Los Angeles for CNN during the OJ trial. So I'm very intimately aware of the life and history of OJ Simpson. He also had done lots of work in broadcast in relation to the Olympics. He was involved in Barcelona, Atlanta and Sydney Olympics. And he's also written a book about the nineteen thirty six Berlin Olympics called Six Minutes in Berlin, which was about the rowing team, a glory event at the Olympics. And it's a story about intersection of sports and politics and media. How the Nazis really wanted to make this, they made this a national spectacle, international spectacle using the power of the media. So he's very well versed in the history of media. He went into academia and is a media historian. Interestingly, and everything I looked at doesn't actually say when he came to the University of Maine. That's in early two thousand, two thousand six, okay. And he is a professor in the Journalism and Communications Department. And I think I first came to know Michael, he would come to our main town meetings. He also has served as a judge for National History Day in Maine, which John Taylor is the state coordinator in judicial leaders in Maine. We run that program. We just had the state finals at the University of Maine a couple of weeks ago. And as I say, John, Michael has served as a judge at that event. And I have a whole stack folder right over here of articles that Michael has written because I'm always on the lookout for speakers. I have another whole folder where it's probably has like a hundred names of potential speakers. And then once I find someone, once I lock in on someone, I might quite take all those articles and put them in a separate folder. So he's prolific and commenting on issues of the day as it relates to media in publications you've probably heard of, like the New York Times, for example. So he's very well regarded as someone who's thinking about these issues of the impact of media. So I will now turn it over to him and the generic title we put in the program was new media democracy, but he's come up with a much fancier title for his presentation. So I turned over to Michael Sohola.
Thank you very much for that. First, I'd like to thank David Rogers from the Marty Chase Smith Library for the invitation to speak here today. This library and archives is a fantastic resource for understanding American politics in the mid twentieth century, as well as Senator Smith herself. And I'm grateful we remain have it by friends, humanities scholars who'll come up and use it and found incredible findings here from the nineteen forties and fifties. And I'm honored to be speaking here. And also I'd like to thank John. Because what he is doing, but if you don't know, is John is flooded with invitations. He runs the Learn with, not doesn't run, you are, what's your title in that, the Learn with AI? Helper? Coordinators and collaborators on the Learn with AI process and every professor up in Oregon does not know what to do about AI. And so John is, is doing seminars and speaking, he's built a website, he's educating all of us. And actually, actually, right, I did that, a quick thing about National History Day. If there's any retired scholars, I'll put pictures, but I love doing it and we have the old record over there who trained me from the Maine Humanities Council years and years ago, but I would really recommend it. It's a lot of fun. So my gift is that is proud of John.
Yes, please.
All right. But I want to tell a quick funny story about inviting John to my introductory journalism class last fall. So I had AI on schedule, but I didn't know anything about AI and, and we're just kind of interested in the syllabus. I told my, I had two, I sort of had two sources. I have a son who's in college and actually studying. He was teaching to other people. And then I had John and I had John come to the class. And a very interesting thing happened and here's a little peek into what's happening on the campus. The class was silent. So I said, okay, here's our humane AI expert. What do you want to know about AI? Let's just open it up. And I thought, I thought, I know they have questions, but I think they're afraid. So I said, let's go off the record. Let's go totally off the record. Nobody, any question can be asked, but we're not going to discuss what the answers are about this discussion. And physical journalists. Yeah. I mean, I'm violating here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what the first two questions were. Okay, by the way, hand shot up. Once we went off the record and they knew that what they said, you know, what couldn't be in front of their first question was, can professors find out if we use AI? Sorry, I apologize, but did I violate the off record? We're good, John. I'm, we don't, don't ask John the answers. It's off the record. Okay, let's be clear. The second question was, will there be jobs for journalists after the break? And, and you know, I can show, but I should not have said that if it was off the record. But gives you some sense of the kind of uncertainty that's going on on these campuses that we don't really have the answers to and that students are afraid to ask the professor. Okay. So thank you, John, for doing that. But not too bad. All right. So I'm going to start today with the goal of my talk. Where do I want to be at the end of this talk? Well, if I said one thing that you take out of here today is the following, don't panic about AI. Okay. You see, the title of my talk is consistently chaotic, and that's what I'm going to tell you about. That historically, there is no stasis to political communication. There is no status quo. Every year, maybe a decade, a new media of communication arrives, all the first principles that involves our conception of political communication. So change is the constant. That's the normal. Okay. Every time we get an immediate, we go through a cyclical process and we should recognize this pattern. We should talk about it because everybody in this room, including an eighteen year old, has lived through a media evolution. Right? But too often we forgot how it works. People in this room remember a world without cable television. Okay. Maybe say better, worse, whatever. But that's what we're talking about here. So let's get started. Okay. I'm going to start with a video of a pretty standard narrative about AI. And what I'm going to ask you when the video is over is not so much the content, but the framing. What is the message and takeaway that these journalists wanted to tell you about AI?
You tell a real video, you need to see online all the time from those that use artificial intelligence. It's getting tougher, isn't it? Evolution of AI is making it so hard to tell the difference.
And with the twenty twenty four presidential election about a year away, more deep fake campaign ads are popping up. Action News Jack's Washington correspondent Samantha Manning walks us through what voters need to know and why there's no oversight of what's being made online.
Twenty quarters of a century. Television campaigns have been a key tool for candidates.
The media's part of the stage.
And as technology evolves.
Yeah.
We can now call the twenty twenty four presidential race. The political arms are being more sophisticated too. This is an example of an AI-generated ad made by the Republican National Committee showing may not feature newspapers in a scenario where President Biden is reelected next year.
Or a, or overlined by a shirt that's down as illegal to get changed.
While this sound is labeled by the RNC as AI-generated on YouTube, questions remain about whether voters will always be able to spot the difference.
Hi, I'm Ron DeSantis.
In September, this deep fake video pretending to show Florida Governor Ron DeSantis stopping out of the presidential race went viral. Look forward, AI disclaimer was included. Back in March, these fake AI-generated photos of former President Donald Trump went viral. How can someone know if it's real or a mistake?
For the general user, it's extremely hard right now, very hard.
Temple University Professor Sabo Kumar says the public can look for things like inconsistencies in the video. Maybe it's an extra finger or word spells wrong. But the signs aren't always so obvious as more and more people become familiar with making these videos. He showed us how simple it is for an average user to use an AI app. This is a test recording. Within about a minute, my real voice was used to create an AI-generated voice recording. Create new audio and video content. Some online platforms like Google have already announced their own disclosure requirements for AI-generated videos. But right now there are no federal requirements, no national framework for how AI videos should be regulated. Are we sort of in this, this wild, wild west scenario where we don't really have so much oversight or enforcement?
Yes, we are, unfortunately. The policymakers have to come with the clear guidelines and that, that, you know, these are the rules you need to follow.
Ball makers have held several public hearings over the last year about how Congress can regulate this technology and its potential impact on voters.
Should we be worried about this for how much? It's one of my areas of greatest concern.
But passing new laws in Congress is often a slow-moving process. While there are several proposals that have been introduced, so far no laws have been passed about how we regulate AI. It's a challenge that will likely only get harder as we get closer to the election.
By mid next year, we will be much more advanced.
Leaving it up to the public for now to navigate the potentially confusing road ahead. For coverage you can count on in Washington DC, some athletic action news chats.
Okay, how, how is it, Frank? What's the takeaway message? Watch out. Be fearful. Watch out. Don't trust anything. Do you think a reporter has embedded assumptions about audiences and voters?
That's not available.
Okay, available, available. Of course, it's not the people watching this on, you cannot, oh, because they're like, yeah, it's all the other people way out there and none of us know. Those voters, they're the ones, by the way, that's communicated here, we call the third verse effective communication, but we all think everybody's super relevant. Any other embedded kind of things in this overall message, Ken?
They don't completely understand the situation and there are experts who know everything.
Let's turn to the experts. You got one right here. Let down right there. Not only, that's excellent. And not only that, but let's write a law. Let's create a whole new series of laws. There isn't any sort of pushback. The idea is we must have a law, right? I, that's my sense of that view, but, okay, so let's think about this. There is presumed ignorance of the audience, okay? There is fear and a problem that the new media represents for democracy involves not persuasion, but exploitation of the population. And there's the need, the demand, I thought, I was curious. Is there an assumption or is there a plea? What's the words we use for political and regulatory intervention? I, my sense is the reporter has a bias. The reporter's bias by interviewing the professor and framing it this way is that the intervention must happen. So when she says Congress is having a problem that needs resolution, there's a very, I think there's an inherent kind of thing, I don't know, implicit. That's what I saw. Did anybody else get that sense? So that's the bias of the journalist who tells and frames the story in a certain way. So we have to be conscious of the way we're talking about and framing and receiving our information about new media publication. Because this exact kind of reporting would have been published in the eighteen thirties about the penny press in the nineteen twenties about radio, the nineteen forties about TV, and about the web in around nineteen ninety eight to two thousand. And so let's look at some of those real quick. Okay, so I just ran through a bunch of ways that new media was disruptive. And that we sort of sequentially, the first one is the Western Union and the Telegraph and the speed election in eighteen seventy six. Those, you know, Western Union favored Republicans, Samuel Hayes, and Tilden, Tilden won more votes. And it's a very famous case. This happened not later. People at the time did not know. But because the Western Union controlled Associated Press and they controlled the Telegraphs, they wanted Hayes to win the election, even though Tilden won more votes, which was the media's electoral success. So they gave the Democrats telegrams to the Republican Party. So when they go in to negotiate, Western, the Republicans had what the Democrats had been telegraphing themselves privately about how to negotiate settlement in eighteen seventy six. And that's how you get President Bruce for the case. He was elected by Western Union. And this is, this is very, very well about it. This is the sort of nondiscussable ingredient that Tim, Tim will work for whatever. But it does get to one thing. It's not that the Telegraph elected, right? Not this, this machine elected Bruce for the case. It's a socio-cultural application of the machine, right? It's a regular third foot, it's the guardrails that, that Dr. was talking about. They didn't exist in eighteen seventy six. They didn't have a federal regulatory system. So if Western Union wanted a Republican elected, they would work for the Republican to be elected. Okay. Second, McKinley and News Corp. eighteen ninety six. Again, Republicans, interestingly. The original News Corp. companies were sort of, if you were really breaking down, was sort of Edison and Nesko. And it was Republican. It was, it was, it was Republican basis. They wanted McKinley, so the original, original News Corp., going back to the Nebologians and toward the Nebologians wouldn't quit Democrats. It just wouldn't be there. It wouldn't, no, it would be William, you're kind of shopping for an ice cream cone. Oh, that's great. But even during the presidential election. But it was minimal. The impact was minimal. It wasn't a big deal. And very quickly built switch when the independents moved out to Hollywood and they started getting immigrant companies and things like that. And they, and, and they started realizing they're going down the middle, but better for them. Roosevelt Fireside Chapter, talking about the set, Eisenhower Kennedy and the televised presidency requirement. Now here's one, that's in the recent act. But why aren't, there's the question, Facebook Cambridge Analytica in the twenty sixteen election, remember that whole thing about Brad Harstow, Donald Trump's mesmerizing magician who could micro-target people and use their data against them, Cambridge Analytics, you remember this? Does this ring a bell? Isn't it kind of interesting that here we are almost in an election season and nobody even talked about micro-part? I mean, it's talking about the survey. Nobody's talking, I'm not talking about the box control. That's kind of a different thing than what Cambridge Analytica did. Cambridge Analytica promised a level of data analysis and data intervention that had never been tried before. Well, if it truly was this magic that put Donald Trump across in twenty sixteen, why don't we talk about it in twenty twenty four? And the answer is we talk, well, we'll talk about it in a second, but AI is simply the latest iteration. Right? It's not the technologies that are cases in this. All right. So there's this cycle of destruction and accommodation. And, and this is not my idea. I drew up this little graph just based on, this comes from basically all the theorists, Donald's syndrome via the American mind, Marshall McLuhan, basically, it's a, it's a basic cycle. You start with the introduction of the new medium, when you get these techno-utopian theories, right? Like, wow, the web is going to energize democracy. Everybody's going to get information. They'll be able to vote online. It's going to be this whole new world that's fantastic. This is a book that kind of represents that. Nineteen ninety five, Lawrence Grossman was the head of PBS, head of NBC. And the Ford Foundation paid him and to come up with a report called The Long Time Republic ReShake Your Democracy and the Information Aid. And it's filled with these kind of utopian ideas about, think of what participation rates will be when you can just press a button on your computer and all, you can get a hundred percent of the American vote. Wouldn't that be amazing? Okay, there you get backlash, right? Which is when we see what actually happens. And Brittany Kaiser worked at Cambridge Analytica. She wrote this book called Targeted, the Cambridge Analytica Whistleblower's Inside Story About Big Data Trump and Facebook Broke Democracy and How it Can't Get. Well, that's kind of interesting for a title. Democracy's broken, right? You broke it second time. Break it small, break it whatever. First, again, kind of, when you see what actually happens with the media as, as this dystopian outcome, you get a moral panic, we're in backlash. And the backlash can be done in several different ways. So we're currently in a backlash against TikTok based on a whole bunch of different things. Based on the relationship with China, but also based on our uneasiness with the social media apps, which were once Facebook, but once they were a liberty party, now Facebook is filled with trolls and bots and is out looking and doing something to us. And so we're, we're, we're moving in a direction of the moral panic and backlash in that way. And then eventually we get to a condemnation, which is where we capitulate and learn to be skeptical and cynical about, not cynical, it's me. We learn to be skeptical and somewhat educated about these things. And, and that's how it works. But eventually we learn that to approach the media in an appropriately skeptical manner and we capitulate into it. And we accommodate it as part of our daily mix of information gathering. And then we move on. And then you know what happens? We get another thing. But here's the thing, you're all, by being here today and listening to John do, you're, you're, you're part of this cycle. You're going to go home, hopefully, and talk to people about AI, talk to the things about what you've learned today, whether it really is a threat, whether it's not a threat, whether it's different, whether it's, and those kinds of things. And that will diffuse, that will diffuse the fear of the AI, that will just use what is actually happening on hold. I hope it's the opposite. Take the opposite message perfectly part of that, watch out. But even if you tell somebody panic, like that journalist did, remember, what a John solution, again, with journalism. So all the people who watched that three-minute clip, if you take the panic, which is the opposite of what I'm saying out of it, that's helpful too. That's media literacy, right? So that's part of, that's part of the solution you propose. So, so in a sense, that's, that's where we are and how the cycle works. Okay. One thing I'm not going to talk about today, I'm just going to do this really quick, is the idea in the Q and A, if somebody wants to ask about this or want to talk about this, that's fine, but you can sell a lot of books in America on letters, that's an inherent political bias in the technology itself. Okay. People love to read this and people love to write this. So for instance, this is a good book by Jack Yor. The Sound by Society, How Television Helps the Right and Persephone. Okay. Or Talk Radio's America. Our industry took over a party that took over the United States. Talk radio, talk radio, it's three hundred and thirty million Americans. And well, actually, in the fact, I studied radio, radio is still the number one, but, oh, talk radio is incredible. I mean, just as a simple, basic thing, you know, oh, by the way, and, and it's like, the idea that Ronald Reagan with my TV and film, first loved the president and then I got, we did Alan's show, The Apprentice. We, we, we're supposed to do for the thing they're not meaning this way. And the funny thing about, about the talk radio idea is you do realize that Donald Trump has run for president twice and both times he got less votes than his opponent. Right? So if, if talk radio is taking over America, how did Hillary Clinton earn more votes than him? How did Joe Biden earn more votes than him? How did Barack Obama earn more votes? There's only been one Republican who's earned more votes in a presidential election than a Democrat in this, in this century. And it was two thousand four, it was George Bush. Every Al Gore won more votes than George Bush in two thousand. They'll put, now, if our media that we use every day was constantly favoring one party over another, that pattern probably wouldn't hold. So, I mean, all right. So let's look at the Jason idea. Couple of Jasons. The first one is the most famous one, the incredible magician Fireside Chat. But the part that's been written out of the history is Dick Roosevelt used radio almost like an incipient radio. And I know that sounds crazy, and, and history, and, and part of the reason is the people who write the history have chalked up Roosevelt's opposition to extreme right-wingers like the Liberty League, Charles Podland, the Radio Priest, John Smith Flynn, a famous conservative commentator, whatever. But what's been left out of that history, oh, by the way, I want to say something about Roosevelt and Roosevelt radio. The guy was absolutely fantastic. We'd never had a president match media, not even Trump and Clinton match a media like Roosevelt and Reagan. Unbelievable. Nobody was like, I'm going to play, but I'm just sad to show you what I mean. But, and actually, I'll play a clip now. I'm going to play a very brief clip from Fireside Chat and I want you to pretend you don't speak English. I don't want you to pay any attention to the message. Words do not matter. I want you to only listen to what Roosevelt's voice is doing, right?
Let the bars.
Sorry, it gets better about.
Let the bar. So because of the shortness of time, I must refer a number of subjects to a later date. Please permit all probable public questions for concerns of all the passage that we with industry and labor. And with respect to these current developments that have taken place, I consider very important. I'm happy to report that after year of uncertainty culminating in the collapse of the spring of nineteen thirty three, we are bringing order out of the old chaos with a greater certainty of the employment of labor at a reasonable rate and of more business at a fair price. Please, government, I'm going to industrial reserve a whole promise of newer peace. Let the bar. So regardless of the.
What do you hear?
Negotiations. He, he's using a voice that he is negotiating with it all.
Okay, so it's kind of interlocked here. He's, he's taking into account that somebody's out there to listen and hear you too. With other thoughts.
He sounds calm at a time when it's the Great Depression.
Very calm, good, good.
Optimism.
Optimism, yes, you're going to get paid. That, but the, did you, I was going to say, it is optimistic, that's it. I got, but did you define the voice optimism? You did. You would understand it going up occasionally, especially if there was somebody like. Labor. The corporations are getting, labor will be paid. The kids, what, what about the kids today?
The kids will be. They're speaking and certain things.
Exactly. And learning your history books is that FDR spoke to the American people just like it was a dialogue. It was this personal intimacy that fit the American democracy so much better than Adolf Hitler's streaking, right? Which fit Germany with all its head in front. That wasn't a person talking to you, not a people. You wouldn't talk in that effective way. Somebody said, right, probably, you wouldn't take those pauses. Wouldn't modulate the voice, wouldn't raise it here. Then it's extreme performance. And if you go to the Edinburgh Library and you look at his scripts, it's all in there and it's him, intentional, under the things. He actually wrote the mispronunciations in court. Because it would catch your ears. You heard a word that didn't sound right. You would listen further. Unbelievable brilliance in using the radio, like I said, nothing like it any president since, but dangerous. Now, the most important radio address in American history was bank fraud in nineteen thirty three. I found this CBS promotional material in an archive that was fascinating. With the sentence that caught me up, no one thinks, does one radio further forward in the minds of men who must commit public faith in a name, an idea or a product, than that use of the microphone to sell America sanity. Literally, had Roosevelt not found the nation in a twelve-minute address on March fourteenth, nineteen thirty three, the entire banking system would have collapsed. This isn't like conjecture. This actually happened. There's nothing, there's no equivalent in American history. There truly isn't. And what I want to point out is this was part of, to a lot of Americans, it was a brand new medium. He obviously could do things that nobody else could do, his opponents couldn't do it. And Roosevelt had this performance because he also disciplined the networks and applied behind the scenes and waited for people to know. Here are two people whose names probably, I'm guessing, most people in the room have never heard of. Bo Carter was a very popular radio commentator in the late nineteen thirties. And James Rollin Rainbow was the president of Yale University, a psychologist who invented something called functionalism. And NBC's radio, I'll say this right here, and Roosevelt did not like that. And one of the things that cracks me up is, we'll start with Angel. Angel's, Angel's psychology is functionalism, which is how the human psychology interacts with this environment, right? Which is perfect, studying radio. And he would go and make these radio lists, he wasn't a Republican, this figure was already negative. But he would never say Roosevelt's name. He would say, he wanted people, I would give a gift here, who might tell them what to do on the radio. And this was extremely upsetting, especially during the election in nineteen thirty six, because the newspapers ran two-thirds to one-third against Roosevelt. Their newspapers were telling people, go for Al, please do. So Roosevelt was using radio or reach plastic, it was called this intermediate. So after the election, David Sarnoff, the chairman of NBC hires April retirement president at Yale, and I assume it's direct radio. This is a memo I found in the U R I, July thirty, nineteen thirty seven. Mark, Matt, it's Martin Mack in fire, which from Paul Watson, he's Roosevelt secretary, he's a Roosevelt word. Says, tell Sarnoff that this was a very, very dumb thing to do, wanting to look at the record of radio. Now, matching today, the President of the United States, Matt, we have a memo to a network broadcaster is saying, people, how do you like, that was a very, very good one. Angel disappears. He disappears in the airwaves. The other one is Bo Carter. Bo Carter was a very popular newsman. He had seven o'clock, seven thirty news pass. He spoke to the. Bo Carter was a very popular newsman, he had seven o'clock, seven-thirty news passes, he spoke to millions of Americans. There, there's many reasons you haven't heard of Bo Carter, one was he was a lot of people, people who were more supportive, he had a big information of the New Germany. He, uh, he also had a campaign and other things, and, um, he did not like the New Deal, he was warning during his lease pass. It, um, actually, there's a very funny article we did before, Russian brought there with Bo Carter. He was warning Americans of the new media and the power there. And in nineteen eighty-two, a historian, I mean, David Culbert, uh, published, got a series of memos in the FDR library, where FDR's, um, press secretary, Steve Merely, and Martin Mackey, who were writing for all of Carter's sponsors, not any CNN sponsors, and saying, we do not want his commentary on the airway, do not pay him anything for it. And he got four contacts, came to the food, and that, and everything, and, uh, this happened in nineteen thirty-seven, and by thirty-eight, he fell to the air. Okay, so I raised this not to say, uh, what has been lost in history about the new media question? And one of the things that has been lost is, there have been warnings, and there have been people who've said this kind of thing, and in the history of world, maybe what the president did, we generally, yeah, we'll look foreverly on how the new media was integrated, right? But there's another question involving Roosevelt, which is, in nineteen fifty-one, we passed the twenty-second amendment, no president could be elected more than twice. And I think that was a tacit acknowledgement of what had happened. How did a president get elected in forty? How did Republicans, Democrats, in the late nineteen forty, in the early nineteen fifty, the Christmas meeting, the debate, and the legislature, think about how it has been helped? And a major, major one was radio, was this new media. And so the guardrail became a constitutional amendment that no matter how good somebody is at convincing America as a populist, we can't let them be constantly reelected. If, you know, you can see if somebody has good at Roosevelt, imagine somebody as good at Roosevelt, who's been seeing Americans, who's been in the White House forever. And people in the late nineteen forties and early nineteen, could imagine that, and that's why we have the twenty-second. Okay, I'm gonna be real quick here, television and the evolution of president politics, I'm gonna skip over the highlight, I, I see Max, when television came in, and the idea of jumping down, it's done down, I'll just jump ahead to the presidential debates. Okay. The way, the way in terms of working democracy of the media, these are not debates, okay? When they were, they decided, they were not called debates, even today, candidates are not allowed to question each other on property, though. They stand at podiums and they only interact with the person at the panel, that is the rule. The Republicans, there's three, and when they actually created the debates, their title was a joint appearance series, and the two parties said they can hold a joint press conference. They're not, so in other words, the press can ask them the same question, but they can't ask each other. Okay, and then they ended up as quiz shows. Why? Because in nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine, there was a quiz show scandal, there was a moral panic about what TV is doing, it's warping our brains, it's fooling us, it's baking us out. So they had, the networks had the stages, the networks had the formats, the networks had everything, and when the Republicans and Democrats were negotiating with the Democrats to do it, they kept trying to protect the candidates more and more, and so somebody came up with the idea, it came. There has to be a time. Well, where's the timeline that come from? It comes from the butter, and they're not fun quiz shows. These aren't quiz shows, they are not intellectual challenges, they are completely, I mean, and, and anyway, the way the format ended up with the presidential debates is that they ended up not being nearly as influential as they could. They're not tested intellect, they're not a rational exchange, they're not dialogue that moves us forward, they are for quiz show. And you're good quiz shows, you're not, and somebody admitted, and somebody, somebody else can score, right? It's a, it's, 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 the way we don't think about it, we're sure, all right, nineteen sixty-eight, Chicago, the whole world's watching. Uh, the way that worked in Washington slightly in the election in nineteen sixty-eight was that, um, the protesters in the Chicago dimension were beaten on television by the policemen, and what shocked the networks and what shocked FCC and everybody. Well, the letters ran eleven to one in favor. People wrote in saying that the protesters, God, they were, they were beating up the babies. This was shocking because the video was very, very good, the film was very, very good. This was shocking to the FCC, I'll say again, the television networks, but what it showed though was that the televisual is, is not as dominant as people think. We define in our brains first, and then we watch TV. We see what on TV, what we've already decided is going. This was a shocking discovery. We thought people actually watched TV, changed their minds, thought about how the information was processed, it doesn't work like that. And that's how, uh, Richard Nixon, in his nineteen sixty-eight campaign, settled the framing and did a brilliant job, um, in that. And the third is, it comes out of the cable news revolution, it was called the Brooks Brothers Riot, I don't know if you've ever seen this, it was November two thousand, and a group organized by the Republican National Committee of Media's arm woke into a counting room in Miami, preaching to stop it. And it was entirely performative, it was a demonstrative act that was designed to cable tell it. It was designed for Fox News, it was designed to appeal to certain people in a certain way, and tell a certain narrative that would be confirmed. It was not designed to persuade anybody. We're Democrats watching the Brooks Brothers Riot, we wanted big votes to be counted, we wanted democracy to proceed in a certain way. It was the other way around, it was to confirm the bias that, and what's interesting about Brooks Brothers Riot, several of the people who organized it were organized in nineteen twenty-six. Same kind of idea, the mind, the televisual, the way it works, um, it's very smart, it's very savvy, and, and, but shows one way that, that television worked out of politics now. All right, and the last word is the worldwide web, all right. Uh, in January seventeenth, nineteen ninety-eight, Matt Drudge breaks the story of the president having a relationship with an intern, uh, because Newsweek won't publish it, and none of the journalists will publish it, this is the first big story that works presidential politics from the web, and it's the end of professional gay debate in that sense, and then it keeps happening more and more, it's democratization of information. You can say the democratization of memo gate was when Dan Rather published memos that were not authenticated about Georgia University Avenue in September two thousand four, and clearly it was the, uh, two thousand four election. Um, and in both cases, these are people who aren't professional journalists. Memo gate was found by a lawyer on the web who compared fonts on a document. And so, um, the democratization of information that Lawrence Roosevelt said was gonna be supreme in the worldwide web, it turns out to be more of a free-for-all. It turns out to be kind of the end of the rational, critical, dialogical exchange that used to be available, you know, in a, in a different format, in a different world, and it's kind of, no, we all define first, we reach out below the mark. Uh, world, that the weather does the level, you know, and social media has just amplified that. This process to such an extent that if you ever see something on the weather, social media, and you wonder, this isn't convincing at all, this isn't persuasive at all. The reason is, it's not news. Everything now is confirmation, like, get out of the, oh, everything now is about getting your side motivated, not persuading the other side. That's kind of a different political world that didn't exist, uh, in the earlier. And there's my very quick theory, so I, a little water right about, all right. So question, thoughts, I'm, I'm, I'm very curious for feedback.
Mike, um, I'll, I'll speak loud. Mike, uh, what I wanted to, um, follow up on was, um, your slip, uh, of introducing the word cynical. It was a process, which I think was a, um, a, a, an honest, uh, slip. Um, it seems today that the issues you summarize with, with media essentially trying to hang on to their viewers, subscribers, by telling them what they want to hear, on both sides of the issue, has created, or seems to me, I think I'm very cynical, about the media on either side, and for that matter, for the web. Is there an answer, where, where will this go, do you think?
Uh, it is, it is an interesting story, it's, I, I can tell now, so I published about it, but at the time, it was secret, so those of you who don't know, The New York Times got rid of the op-ed page, it doesn't exist anymore, there's no such thing called the op-ed page, it's guest essays. And I have actually published research and scholarship on how the op-ed page can be viewed, uh, and what, what, I'm just, reason I'm jumping in here is because what you're describing, the cynicism, there used to be this kind of rational, critical exposure to other viewpoints and exchange. And the op-ed page raked up, that's why I love this, why I researched it and did it. Well, in twenty twenty-one, the era kind of entered the op-ed page. And I, I happen to know the op-ed editor, you know, to make, told me very, very thirty-eight process, and he said, hey, we're gonna use your scholarship, uh, to discuss the onboarding, how this, where's there being, do you consult, because there's some questions, and then stuff. It's not a part of that process that ended it, um, uh, I was not favored, but I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I. That decision, and the, was that the, the forum for rational, critical discourse can spin is too what in today's world. In other words, we call each other names, it's too emotional, you can't have persuasive with an extension of one in comparison to the other. And so they said they didn't want to participate in it, in the way that it had been previously structured, they wanted to curate what the New York Times readers uh, contained through guest essay. And so, I mean, it's astonishing, if you go through the history of the op-ed. Um, they published Red Hampton, the Black Panthers' call for armed rebellion in the United States in nineteen seventy-one, they published a defense of, um, Paul Ponce in nineteen seventy-seven. They published Vladimir Putin on the Syria massacres in twenty, that's recently, in twenty twelve. And here we are in twenty twenty-four, but we got wars going on around the world, and the New York Times are saying, we can't expose the American people, it's too dangerous right now to have that kind of access to information. Uh, because we can't trust the audience in the same, and it's all over, they ended crossfire on CNN. We're not so convinced to have a piece of yet, we're in Jane Alexander, and they're begging, point out, we used to, we used to expect it as part of our media diet, to be exposed to people who disagree with it. But you know, the problem with that is, there's a number, your customers do not want to be reading something that people believe they miss about their world. Even if it's intelligent, even if it's fact-based, even if it's fully supported, you know, even if it's completely persuasive. And we've seen this many times, it's not just the New York Times, but it's possible that a lot of people be exposed. I mean, buses paid seven hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in settlement to not upset their viewers about their group, but I feel actually, twenty twenty. Think about that, that was not that much money, not telling them to do, okay?
Uh, Mark, um, your viewers on the fairness doctrine, uh, I know that's a big subject, it's a lot of, a lot of people, not a lot of people would know about that. But what about the cleaning out eventually of the FCC as well? Seems to be the Biden administration has pretty much tried to do, uh, you know, destroy just about everything within the Constitution as it was. A lot of people don't like that, I'm afraid, but anyway, uh, what's your feeling on that?
Okay, there's two things. The first thing I wanna talk, I wanna mention is your take on the Biden administration and the Constitution, and there's a Supreme Court case that we'll pull up right now. Mercyville, Missouri, how many people know this case that was argued in March, this is March? Anybody know Mercyville, Missouri? Okay, for those of you who don't know, during the COVID pandemic, the Biden administration, uh, no, actually, one of the things that complicates when you're in Missouri is that the front administration did it in twenty twenty, but the Biden administration did it more, by the way, so it's bipartisan, so. Uh, they sent the same kind of things that FDR did in nineteen thirty-eight, the NBC, to the social media companies. They said, using the regulatory power, this is, okay, this is the allegation, and this is why it's extremely it's very complicated on the one sentence, both Biden and Trump are against section two thirty, section two thirty immunizes the platforms from third-party user content. So, what both Biden and Trump did, but Biden did it more than Trump, let's be clear, Biden definitely did it more than Trump, there's more evidence, because the pandemic before we had the vaccine, remember, you know, it was worse, the pandemic was worse under Biden, I mean, we didn't have a way out of it, um, when he was inaugurated, so they both, but in my case, they went to social media companies and they told them that algorithm between high century COVID vaccine information, um, well, it's all right here, they did the things, things about election denial, mask and vaccine efficiency, and less time. Now, this has been proven, we, they have the emails, it's all out in the court case, that the administration said, if you don't do this, we're gonna change sections. We're gonna modify, we're gonna get rid of the misinformation, we have to, by changing the rules to the internet. And so this walks in with a lot of the state of Missouri, and it's been joined by many, two other states, Louisiana and, uh, Indiana. Louisiana and Missouri, that the, the, the three states of their citizens were, um, approached on by the White House during the COVID. And we'll see, it was argued in March, and we'll see. So that's the, the second part of your question there about the Biden, the, the, the first part of the SEC. The SEC going back is, had been prepared before the COVID came, let's not pretend, otherwise, sorry, we have the SEC lawyer. Like, the, uh, the, the, the one thing I'll say about the fairness doctrine, um, um, people think the fairness doctrine meant there weren't politics, and it was, there were, excuse me, the fairness doctrine, and the people, okay? Think that they removed politics, luckily, I look out at the audience, I know that people here can remember, radio in the nineteen seventies, radio in the eighties and four. Um, there were guys like Bob Graham, the NBC, Joe Pyne, do these things very well, they were Joe Pyne in California. Um, there were plenty, H L Hunt was on the radio, there was plenty of politics on the American networks, we didn't need era of the fairness doctrine, people time. So it's, it's been kind of forgotten, the way they dressed it up and got around this, they said, well, people patriotic, there's a Bob Graham, it, it's not liberal. It's not partisan, and say, Republicans, that has to be patriotic, so let's have a patriotic way of people. Um, so that's, the fairness doctrine is, is, is complicated by the fact that it didn't do what a lot of people thought it did. Um, and, uh, and, uh, and so I'm, it's a, it's a, yeah, a little complicated. I know that, I think a lot of people call for the return of the fairness doctrine, not knowing what it was, how it actually worked.
You, you were alluding to this, in talking about, um, fireside chats. Talking about fireside chats, and how it's very performative. And I, I've been listening to a podcast by Eric Blue, who heads Project Citizen, and that was the plug he was making, that media is very performative. What's the ratio of performative to informative? And that doesn't flush away.
That's a. I'm gonna flip that around, I'm gonna flip that around, and I'm gonna say, because I can give you all of your, including, I can give you all the, you know, the media college, and the entire field of study of that question, in that way. But, um, the other guy's radio is performative, my guy's radio is important, I've said it's essentially a bit simple.
It's a Jerrison game.
E- exactly, and that's, that's the problem, is we have to question our own, the biggest single issue right now is that no question our own system. We don't, we're not, I'm playing, I'm guilty, okay? I don't blame you, but we are being channeled in ways that are unimaginable twenty years ago, thirty years ago, forty years ago. Uh, and, and when I say in ways that are unimaginable, you could argue that the CBS interviewers with Walter Trump, they was completely biased. And you could, you could argue that, you could say, hey, it was too liberal, they did all this Vietnam stuff, that caused all the problems, we're better than that. And that's perfectly fine, people did argue that back then, but you, but the product itself was seen by people from different perspectives, to have that kind of conversation. The difference today, remember, particularly in no then, the difference today is we're not being told we're not exposed algorithmically to the information that we live with. I've been following that, but if you tune in something to be informed, in nineteen seventy-eight, radio existed in a certain way, you could have, you still have same prison, man, but then you could say, this TV show is missing something, so I know if I read my newspaper, I read my magazine. But today, our media diets are so catered to us down to micro-targeting, which reminds me of a thing that John said, that's interesting, you have the micro, um, AI that can get down to the absolute person, there's no scale in personal vision, for those of you who don't know, the number one change between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four in the largest advertising expenditure for campaigns, and I say change, it's not the number one expenditure, I'm on such, it's still over the years. The biggest change in percentage is going to something called micro-influence. It turns out that they used to say, oh, she forgot she, she has a million followers, let's get hers, she forces popular. No, there's more credibility if you have hundreds of thousands. If you have someone who's five and ten thousand followers, the way you say, because it doesn't appear, you're not a celebrity, it doesn't appear to be paid for in an ad, what you say has more credibility with your audience. So the Democrats end up holding party right now, that's the biggest change, more microphone use, what's called micro-tailored influence. So the Democrats and the Republican Party right now, that's the biggest change, more and more people use what's called micro-tailored influencers on social media. Nobody knows this, we see our friend who has six thousand likes and doesn't have to report to the FCC that they really love Robert F. Kennedy and his brain more, right? You know, and it's not reported as an ad, it's not. And if that person had one point one million, and they like Robert F. Kennedy and his brain, well, we can all be skeptical, because we know somebody with a million followers is not, maybe not so limited. Somebody with eight thousand followers on Instagram, that is comfortable. And that's what I mean when I say it's really, it's almost frightening how incredibly we're being siloed into the incredibly tailored media message in this day.
I'm curious your thoughts about um, social media and media and polarization, and. If we are truly more polarized now than in, in um, you know, other points of history, or if um, that's just our perception?
Great question, and I, as a story, I said, just off the set, and, and of course, it was a lot, you know, we had rebellions, we had, we've had the Whistlers, like, we've had, we've had a series of, and you can say, we had. Take news, we have take news wars, not, I mean, you might say, oh, the weapons of mass destruction, two thousand four Iraq, what a disaster, how could we have done that? But you know what, we took over Cuba, and the Philippines, maybe it's ninety-eight, oh, we should be blown up, that was probably just a magazine accident. But a big newspaper company had been trying for years to get into the business of Cuba, and decided to tell the people, hey, you know what? This, it's such a funny story, it's a horrible story, but it's so funny, you didn't bring it up, because um. Spain wasn't putting satellites, they couldn't, they couldn't even hold their own colony, it seemed like any rational sense that's favored to do that. Uh, but for media companies, yeah, so it's not new in that way, and, and, and the polarization in that way, um, um, but there is something, there is, yeah. Well, again, I'd say is, what, what seems to be new is the idea that we're not aware of what we're not being exposed to. We don't, we don't, we seem to interact with neighbors who are at different places in the same kind of way we did. That's more integral. You know, you know, I know I did, so growing up forty years ago, it did seem to me, I'm looking at the audience, I wonder if it's huge news. That there was more exchange, there was really more exchange between. Between all of them, and that's I think, for.
But if there was more exchange, because you can talk to someone, and they're actually in talks, but the way, it seems to be. Maybe it seems. You, you can't talk to your neighbors anymore, any respect, you know, responsibility, and my question is, where do we go from here, how can we change that? Besides, we can find a sign for them.
Another one thing I would say is, think about your media diet, read the stuff you disagree with, that you think might be credible, that's on all of us. And we will be in the minority to do that, but we will be helping society in that way. And hopefully we can get on people, the problem is that the money isn't information dollars, the money for the New York Times, Fox News. Uh, Newsmax, all the money is, you know, a news organization is telling you what you already know.
My point about things like three press and uh, the, the, the new channels where you've got established uh, journalists breaking away from. Um, Rolling Stone or the New York Times and going on their own. But is there any more credibility there, in your opinion, or is it still just talking to the converted?
And, and what you're mentioning here is like, I don't know if I knew our new Substack, right, and Substack is this new alternative media company that allows people to build their own platforms, and they make a lot of money, people like Iglesias, people like Ed Sullivan, millions of dollars. One of the other projects in Letter from America is the number one Substack, based something year and name, that's sort of, they did people millions of dollars a year. But when I read Substack, and I've just gotta be honest, the framing is predictable, the, the, the authors. I don't think there is somebody who can really be comparing these days, day and age, because so upset your eyes, Christopher Hitchens got fired, I don't know if anyone can remember, in S S, Christopher Hitchens. Or Alexander Colber, or Tom Peter Poore, or these type of figures that used to be in the public domain, right? They got fired left and right for saying things that upset their bosses, but they had a big enough audience who would listen to them. That they were as easily predictable, and I, it's amazing, I can't really think of a figure like that today. Who is not afraid to upset a media figure, that's not afraid to upset their audience, and hasn't been enough follower. To do well.
What about Joe Rogan?
Rogan is interesting, Rogan is interesting. And I, I've studied some of, of, of the Rogan stuff, and Rogan, Rogan is predictable, and does have a form of, and he is, I mean. Spored Bernie Sanders, Spored Bernie Sanders in two thousand, they're doing podcasts, right? So I think Joe Rogan is the best example, but I think it's a different example, because he, he um. He allowed points of views, please, like, who listens? That's a good example.
Oh, Volga.
Who?
Is it Volga, the A H L?
Volga is a children's author?
No. I'm sorry, she didn't hear it back long.
No, 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 but um, are you thinking of something with a name like that?
Volga is a novel, you know, really walk up and then.
But no, I think there is journalists, I did, but the name just like that. No, 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 I. All right.
What about Maggie Kelly?
What do you say, Maggie Kelly? Uh, Maggie Kelly, Maggie Kelly, in fact, for those who don't know, Maggie Kelly has podcasts, I can listen to my news people every day, she is still very influential. But she got, she got twenty million dollars to go to Fox News, to NBC, and then self-started NBC, because at NBC, you're not speaking to people who aren't confidential, right? How, how many people, do you know that one American newsman in the United States of America right now speaks to the largest daily audience? Okay, speaks to nine million Americans a night, give you an idea. His daily news path is watched by more than CNN, MSNBC, and Fox News combined. What's his name?
Ben Shapiro.
What's his book, sorry, you got it, I have it here.
Ben Shapiro.
It's not Ben Shapiro, it's not Joe Rogan, but, but they're not daily, oh, Ben Shapiro has that daily update podcast.
It's not one of the late night hosts?
It's not one of the late night hosts, his audience is probably four times larger than mine. Who is the person who has an audience of nine million Americans daily?
Patrick Carlson.
You need, you need to know something, Carlson's actually in the mafia, you know? Russian book, that's the way to do it. Think of, but I would say, think of how astonishing it is, that we're a nation of three hundred and thirty million, we have somebody who speaks to about ten of the largest audiences in the United States every night. Nobody is listening, his name is David Wheeler, and his show is called ABC World News. The fact, there's a fact that we assume Fox News has this, CNN has this incredible, how fake news, capable news, and yet, our fellow Americans, their number one source of news is a. And that name David Wheeler, who's a very ethical and professional journalist, you should tune into his show, it's very good, and I don't have to say that, because my dad was a producer. But the fact that we're sitting here, we're talking about Substack, and we're talking about Joe Rogan, we're talking about this and that, when, when. The biggest audience of American information is somebody we're not naming, tells you something about us, starters. But it also tells you something about having information, it's also one of the things that gives me, that gives me some sense of um. Uh, protection for the information environment.
Is he on the evening news?
Yeah.
In the regular, in the evening?
The regular, it's maybe some more, Peter Jennings of today's work.
What, what, what last question?
I can suggest that regular people learn more about digital literacy and understand what's credible when they're reading.
Uh, the, the second part, first, what's credible when you read your news? Um, um, look for the fact basis, look for the links, look for all kinds, I wrote a piece for the New York Times called um, how to stop smart people spreading stupid ideas. And that would know it, look for the links, look for the supporting evidence, let it, it didn't disagree, so it let, we opened it this way. But the, the first part of what you said was interesting. AI election reporting, and simply by repeating what John said, and repeating what I said, and if you said, using the education, the media literacy that you received here, um, you're part of the solution already. And that's all we didn't need to talk more about, let's not panic about it, let's look for, just like that, let's look for the guy who has six fingers, or seven fingers, like, hey, man. Don't go in with the presumption that AI is here, and that will try and say, and that kind of thing, and that's. And John, I'm not here, in nineteen sixty-one, CBS, there was an hour special, um, postulated by M I C called The Thinking Machine. And what they do is they turn a computer on, and they program it to write a Western, to write a Western. It's, it's the first artificial subject, this is forty-three, sixty-three years ago, nineteen sixty-one, sixty-three years ago. And then they hacked out the Western in the second half of the show, that the computer wrote for that. One hundred percent from the flow charts that they entered in the computer. You know, if the, if the hero mode is done, if the hero, it gets down to level, if hero takes two alcoholic drinks, he can't shoot straight. He's ready to want it, but this stuff has been around, hard that road, you know, been around for a very long time.
Thank you, thank you.
Michael, it's his. And so um, we're gonna conclude this part of the presentation with, first of all, a quiz. And what is your takeaway from Michael's presentation, what are you supposed to remember? Don't panic, that's why I want Michael to go second, once you're going home, not panicking. Uh, and then I'm gonna give you an assignment, and that is go to chat, chat G P T, which John talked about. And type in these questions. First had been, tell me about Margaret Chastness's first Declaration of Conscience. First what? First Declaration of Conscience, the very famous speech that she gave in nineteen fifty, speaking out against McCarthyism. Then type in, tell me about Margaret Chastness's second Declaration of Conscience, where she, I want to tell you when she gave it, this chat G P T is gonna tell you when she gave it. That's wrong, again, absolutely one hundred percent wrong. I give the answer, chat, chat G P T's answer to the first question, A or an A plus, I give it an F minus, that's the answer for the second. So it's, it's a good reminder of the caution we need to have as we use this thing called AI. And third, I want you to type in, what would Margaret Chastness give today, was it Declaration of Conscience? You know, that's decided, so what do you think of that response? We're quite often asked, oh, what would Margaret think about what's happened today, and I always refer that. Those questions back to her first Declaration of Conscience, you read that, but you decide what Margaret would have thought. But chat G P T will now tell you what it thinks Margaret would think today, so that is your assignment. Come back next year, we want to know, I'm just, or if you see us before then, feel free to share with me, thanks. So we're gonna conclude today, before we do lunch, we have one more part that we want to do, and that is. Nicole Potter is going to invite someone up for a very.